May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Uh, trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
President Byrne.
Is there a motion to nominate the chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of this meeting.
I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, meeting's been called to order and we have a quorum, so would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something other than what's on committee or on the agenda? No, come on, could you come on up? Yeah, just if you could state your name and address for the record and...
Yes, my name's Maria Tellez and I'm the store manager of The Lowe's in Vernon Hills. I'm not sure if I'm doing this now, last time we did it at the end, but I was here to request the permit for... So is that like later?
Is that on, is that on, uh...
It's on omnibus agenda.
Yeah, that's on omnibus, but yeah, we'll be getting to that in a little bit.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Anyone else? Okay, then, uh, nobody on staff has a speaking part tonight? We're right to omnibus for the agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through J on the omnibus?
Motion to approve?
There a motion, a second, any comments or questions? I did want to talk a little bit about The Lowe's one, and I'm glad you're here.
So we'll pull that?
We can pull it and then...
Nah, I think, I don't think we need to pull it for a separate vote. But, I mean...
Well, if you're gonna discuss it, it might be easier just to get everything else done on the omnibus that doesn't have discussion, then deal with it.
Pull that, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think so.
Then I'm fine with that, we can pull that.
Well, item H.
H it is, I believe.
Yes. So then, would, uh, do the first and second agree it'd be A through G and I and J?
Yes.
Okay, um, then, um, we have a roll call on A through G and I and J?
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne. President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Now, my question on it was, uh, I was recently over there and you had some, um, grills that were actually out into the, almost within a, you know, three, four inches of a traffic lane. And, and I can even show you, I took a picture of it, and there was a lot of lumber stored outside the door at the, um, um, pro, over by the pro area. And, and it really is separate from this outdoor display you wanted to do, but I was kinda surprised that you had so much stuff out front. And those grills, I'm, a couple of cars were fairly close to them as they went by.
Oh, okay, yeah, the grills, yeah, they're up front in, in front of the store. We displayed them last year too, um, and the lumber too, but if that's a problem, we can bring it inside.
Well, the lumber, I don't know that you were displaying it, it just looked like it was all, I mean, it was stacks of huge lumber, it wasn't like anything...
In front of the store?
Way over by the pro, coming into the pro thing, I can, I can show you a picture of it, you know, later, um...
They were back off...
They were back off, but it was still stored outside the building is what I'm, what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, they're outside the building, in front of the building.
And the, uh, the, um, um, grills that I'm talking about were actually almost interfering with the traffic lane. They were so far, you know, normally you put everything on the sidewalk between the columns. This was outside of that by fifteen or twenty feet.
We'll move that then, yeah, they, they, we probably put it out for the weekend, was it this weekend?
Yes.
Yeah, so they probably did it for the weekend, but I'll tell them to bring it inside.
Yeah, well, the thing is, it's not necessarily inside, it's just...
Yeah, further in.
Right up against the traffic lane. I mean, the, the front ones and the sign were right on the edge of the traffic lane.
All right, I'll, we'll bring them inside, we'll bring a closer into the store.
Okay.
And then the lumber, you don't want it outside?
I don't, I don't know what our, uh, I can clarify that.
Lowe's and, and also Home Depot as well, they each have an outdoor merchandise display and sales permit that was originally approved by the board years ago. That's for the display of goods on the sidewalk. And once they get formal approval from the board, if it's on the sidewalk, they don't have to come back every year for renewal. But they do have to display things in a way that's safe and, and logical, so it's, it's really a matter of locating them such that you can display the grills and then, but people could still walk up and down the sidewalk safely without having to use the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, that, uh, that was the case with the, with the grills. It was, it was definitely interfering with pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic, so...
And then the landscape display, this was, as a reminder to the board, this was an amendment to the municipal code that was done, I think about seven years ago now. Prior to the, that amendment, we didn't allow outdoor merchandise of any kind to be displayed in a parking lot. We amended the code to allow landscaping material only with certain restrictions. And then, in, in the case of it being displayed in the parking lot, you'd have to come back on an annual basis. That gives the board an opportunity, if operationally it wasn't working the previous year, gives the board an opportunity to say, hey, let's change the location or add some stop signs or whatever, so, um, just to clarify.
And this particular item, I, I have no problem with, I, any board members I know was on omnibus, so I...
With the lumber?
Yeah, so go back to the lumber, though, so is that meant for actual, if I can see the picture, was that meant for like retail?
For retail sale, yeah, outside.
It's been out, I mean, geez, ever since the store because, as Michael was saying, uh, just displayed, but it's by the pro entrance, so it's to the far north, and, uh, it is back off the sidewalk. I mean, it is on the sidewalk back to the building, so it's not in the way of any, since I was there going back Friday or so, so...
And, and these items are kept outside just for convenience sake, because it's easier for the...
Well, it's, it's more for convenience, it's easier for shoppers to, you know, get stuff from out there, and it's more of, because we stock so much of it right now for the season, we're starting our season, so it's more of, you know, um, bulking it out, you know?
Yeah, I understand the, I understand the grill thing.
Yeah.
Um, being in the way, I'm...
Home Depot does the same too.
Mike, I'll, I'll talk to you later about this and...
Yeah, we could, we could clear up the sidewalk issue, if there's things that are obstructing, we can work with you and get things into a safe place and still, you can still display the merchandise that was approved previously by the board. And there's other locations like Mariano's, Whole Foods, Home Depot, off the top of my head, those are the other locations where we approved those type of permits on the sidewalk only, so we'll contact you, I'll talk to you...
Was it meant for, the first part, was it meant for large bulk of lumber to be out front there, was that, that how the ordinance reads?
I can, I can show you later and we can...
Thanks, yeah, and we, yeah, I could, I'd be happy to follow up.
Because the other merchandise that's out there, I'm used to seeing that out there, this was just a surprise because those grills were...
Oh, yeah, the grills, yeah, it's, they're, they're, they're out in, they're way out, like, they're, I think they're in top of the, 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 what's it called, like, out in the parking lot, yeah. But the lumber, um, like I said, if that's an issue, just please let me know, because I've been in this store for two years and it's been out there every year. So if, if there is a problem, like I said, I just thought it was okay, you know?
Yeah.
I've certainly noticed in the past too, and I've always kinda wondered, I just wasn't sure what our, what our code actually...
And like last year when I was here, it wasn't brought up, so I just thought it was okay.
I think it is fine.
Yeah, the code doesn't stipulate, you know, what, what type or anything like that, so I mean, the lumber's been out there for at least two or three years, I know that, it isn't a location that was approved, so...
I think it may have just been these grills that made me notice something and then I started looking around.
Were the grills in the, were the grills in the striped loading zone, outside of the canopy?
Yeah, they were in the loading zone.
Yeah, like right at the edge of the loading zone where...
On a windy day.
On a windy day, it'd be right in the...
I mean, it's your liability, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can have someone go out there in the next couple of days and just work with you to help you understand where the items are allowed to be displayed.
Okay, so... Okay, so, uh, I'm okay with the permit with the corral though?
We're, we're in a motion.
It'll be a motion, but you don't have to worry about it, so...
So I'm done?
Mm-hmm.
Almost.
So is there a motion to approve item A, H that was removed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other comments or questions?
So what is stored outside is different from what we're approving, so in terms of like the lumber, is that different than what?
Yeah, the only thing you're being asked to consider tonight is the landscape display in the parking lot, and that's allowed to be displayed between April 1st and the end of September, I believe, whatever the date I gave you.
Yeah, this is actually out in the parking, right.
Home Depot.
Right, no, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm still a little confused as to why, why it was approved to, to have outside storage of those other items, but I guess they were...
Yeah, we have, we have in our regulations, and we've had it for a number of years, I think since 2003, allowances where you can, or, you know, a store can come before the board and ask for permission to display items outside on the sidewalk in front of their store, and there's a number of stores that have that permit, I, I named a few of them previously. And that's what you guys are talking about in terms of the grills and the lumber and such, they have that permit. That's not what's being requested tonight, what's being requested tonight is approval for, to display landscaping goods only in the parking lot. That type of, of, of request requires annual approval by the board, so that's what you're being asked to consider.
But, but for the, for the lumber specifically, the board, seven years ago, you got, you got...
It's been out there since they, in fact, when they built it.
They, they do have approval for that on the sidewalk in front of their store, it sounds like, you know, as the years have gone by, they may have some of this stuff stored in areas where they're not allowed to be stored, so, or displayed, so we will, we'll visit the manager.
I'm pretty sure with the Menards, it said no outside storage of items, so that's why...
Well, they have that yard that's right to the south of them.
So, so did they have a different rule then?
They could come to, I think they could come...
Menards can come before the board and they could request permission to display merchandise in front of their store on the sidewalk, and if the board were to approve that, then they can just renew that license annually without having to go back before the board. I don't anticipate them coming to the board for a landscape display outside in their parking lot, because as trustee Markwart stated, they have such a big outdoor garden area, they just simply don't have the need.
Right.
But the only thing they have, which has already been approved, and they can't store it inside, is the propane tanks. That's the only thing that's in front of, of Menards.
So maybe is there just very specific, um, does, does the ordinance say how much you can have, how much square footage you can cover in the front? Or you can go from wall to wall, how far setback it has to be from the parking lots, I think it's, it's getting pretty crowded, that picture.
With, with all the lumber, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and I can't, I don't have it memorized, but the ordinance will say it has to be on the sidewalk. It'll have to say that there's a minimum dimension walking path on the sidewalk, so people can safely pass by the merchandise. And there's probably a couple of other regulations that we can review with the manager. It sounds like some of these displays need to be adjusted because they're not in compliance with their ordinance, and, and we'll follow up on that.
Okay. Anything else on this issue? If not, then can we have a roll call on item H, please?
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries, so you're all set on that?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're all set.
All right, my name is Laura and I'm from Home Depot, so I'm requesting the same permit she is.
No, yours was already approved.
I wasn't already approved?
Yeah. Yours was on the, yeah, when we did our...
They told us we had to show up.
You can, uh, actually tell the timeframe, so you get TV time, so...
Yeah, yours was item G on that, that omnibus we just approved, so...
Okay, all right, cool, thank you, last minute, I appreciate it, guys.
Nice job.
Thank you for coming, though, we appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, no unfinished additional business? Any new business or communication, anybody have anything?
One thing, just a few weeks ago, I mentioned that you can go to covid, covidtest.gov and get, uh, free covid tests sent to each household, they expanded it, just so everyone knows that they were very strict, that you could only get four per household. They expanded it last week, now you can get two sets of four per household. So I'm just mentioning it because I ordered them and I got them in a matter of two days. And if you have children out of state in college, you can send them to their residence and get them sent there too. So, it's covidtest.gov and it just, it's an easy thing to do, so I just thought I'd mention.
Okay, any other new business or communication? Okay, then, uh, motion to, are we going to? What's that?
Adjourn the regular meeting.
Adjourn to committee of the whole.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn and go to committee of the whole?
So may.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, I call the March 15th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting to order, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
President Byrne.
Is there a motion to nominate the chairman pro tem for the committee of the whole meeting?
I'd like to nominate once again trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of this meeting.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, uh, first item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of March 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion a second, any comments?
Yeah, I do have some comments regarding item number two, the concept presentation for a new office project, Zeus, I wanted to, um, I wanted to highlight the fact that I'd asked for the petitioner to remove that southern drive, and I don't see that in the, uh, in the meeting minutes here. So if we could add that, they did have my suggestion for solar panels, but not the suggestion to remove that southern drive and, um, just north of where the residents are. Unless I missed it.
We would need to amend the motion to approve with the changes stated by trustee Oppenheim.
Okay, is, um, so, um, does the first agree to accept the change?
Because I definitely know it was, if it's not either, I definitely know it, it has been mentioned to them, so...
Several times. Uh, is the second agree? Who was?
Who was the second?
Second, I think.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You agree?
So it's corrected?
So corrected to what you stated?
To reflect?
To reflect that, that I asked for them to...
To add that to the notes.
To add that to the notes, to the meeting minutes.
Yeah, to move the drive from south to the north is added to the, to the minutes.
Not just, not just the right in, right out, but, but the, the full, the full...
To move it all the way to...
To move the whole, to get rid of the drive on, on south of the building.
Correct.
So what we're doing, we're just acknowledging that that was stated.
We're acknowledging that that was stated, and I wanted to clarify for the record that that was stated.
And do I need to second that again?
Yes.
Then that's a second.
All right. There's no other discussion, is that a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, concept presentation for proposed development, commonly known as Bell Tire, located at 1810 North Milwaukee Avenue.
Get the presentation up here. Good evening, everyone, my name is John Nurse Wiki, I'm with Enright Architects here on behalf of Bell Tire. We're excited to have a potential location here in Vernon Hills. We've got a quick presentation for you, uh, we've been working really closely with staff, uh, right now we're looking at the parcel that is Lot 4 in Greg's Landing, uh, just north of the new Aldi that went in, south of Menards. This is a view of the site from Milwaukee Avenue, uh, it's just north of that, or just to the right in this picture of the retaining wall there in that open space. This is a, a concept site plan we put together, uh, like I said, we've been working really closely with staff and we've reorientated the building to face east in line with, uh, Aldi's front entrance as well. We're looking at beautifying the detention pond a little bit, since there's no landscaping around there. But our lot is that entire five acre lot. Before we get into more details, um, a little bit about Bell Tire. Started in Michigan, it's an over one hundred year old, uh, year old company, it is family owned, uh, they have about a hundred and thirty locations now in Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, Illinois now, uh, this is part of expansion in Illinois of fifty locations over the next three years. We've got six under construction, uh, four recently opened and several more coming, so they employ about two thousand people right now. Bell is the founder's wife's name, is where that came from. Little bit about the product, uh, we have two prototypes, there's no major engine transmission repair work or body work. Everything is done inside the building, um, and staff handles everything entering and exiting, uh, so there's no honking or, you know, any, uh, various noises that come out of there other than the work being done. In terms of hours, they're never open before 8:00 AM, and the latest they're open till is 8:00 PM, only on Monday and Thursday, and they are closed on Sundays, and there's about twenty employees, um, come max, uh, at each location. Uh, this is a, a view of, of what a typical bell looks like, they all have that same, uh, style of brick. Everything is clear glass around the showroom, and they have capstone up, um, at the top with a tiny bit of ephes on, on the cornice at the top of the buildings. Everything is LED and, um, we have fire suppression throughout. Here's some renderings, uh, or color elevations, uh, Mr. Atkinson, uh, pointed out to us that the blue looked a little bit, uh, bold here in these renderings, in these elevations, so we took some photos of some other locations we have, uh, in the natural light, it's very, uh, more of a pale blue, I guess, if you really look at it, but, um, again, this is our site plan, um, main access is through a shared entry with Aldi, um, and then we're looking at a car access to the north of the lot, and, um, that's about it, so I'm open to any questions, any, uh, comments on the project and anything we can answer.
Do we have any questions from anyone on the board?
I got a question, so...
Sure, go ahead.
I thought we had another tire entity looking initially, right, about a year ago? Do you remember that?
That's correct, it was about a year and a half ago and that deal fell through. Different, different kind of tire.
So I got a question, so why, why Bell Tire versus say Costco, because a lot of people I know go to Costco, because are you, do you have better pricing, or? Is it, or just tires or Tire America, right?
So we're, we're actually a very, uh, a very good niche to where we have like the pricing of a discount tire, but we perform the service of a Firestone where we have, um, and they, they compete with any other deal in town, um, so it's a very good location, the showrooms are very nice, it's all, um, we have, you know, places for people, there's wifi, it's, you know, there's food, beverage, it's... And from a competition standpoint, um, they're almost similar to a Walgreens and CVS or Burger King and a McDonald's, it's like the more they congregate a little bit, the tire stores, they kinda lift each other up, where you can train citizens and you can train, um, you know, customers that this is where we go for tires, so, um, but we do have relationships actually with Costco and we've developed outlots with Costco even, so although they have tires themselves, we have even partnered with them to open a store on one of their locations.
Is there a supply chain issue with tires right now, like, or you got?
No, that, we haven't seen any issues, um, they're such a solid foundation, uh, you know, of their family business that, um, they, they buy everything in advance, so I mean, they already have steel that they've ordered for, uh, many of the stores that they don't even know where the steel's gonna go yet. So they're, um, they own all of their stores, so there's no franchising, um, and so they're able to, um, get ahead of the supply chain a little bit by ordering in advance, and they started that last, last year, probably.
Yeah, where, where do tires, I mean, where are they made, where do you get them from, I'm, I'm just curious?
Well, a lot of the tire store, uh, tire companies, I mean, they warehouse, so...
Manufacturers, where do they get them, where do the tires come from?
I don't know, uh...
You don't know?
That's a good question, I mean, I guess I'll have to get prepared for the...
He builds a building.
It's the first time anybody's asked, a hundred and thirty stores.
Are they made in China, are they made in, you know, are they made in the U, I was just curious?
Come from the tire fairy.
Yeah. We just open a warehouse and they, they show up.
Well, petroleum prices probably affect tire prices, correct?
Um, I don't believe they do, because, um, even when there was the economic downturn, you know, tire stores still did very well because people just transitioned to, instead of buying new vehicles, they service and repair existing vehicles.
Where are the garages, is it the south side?
So yes, we rotated, this is, uh, our square prototype, so there's eight bays to the south, um, there are two bays, um, that are out the back, those are just the alignment bays, um, and then that's where deliveries come.
You said the back, what's, where's the back?
Oh, sorry, the west here. So, we rotated, we initially had, um, the entry to the north, and when working with staff, um, we thought it would be better to rotate it and have the front facing Milwaukee, which is the main vista point for that area, and that way, we wouldn't have the rear of the building being seen by Aldi or anybody from Milwaukee, and so staff recommended that.
So, so the majority of your bay doors will be facing the Aldis?
Correct.
Or did you, did, where did you...
Correct, there's eight that will be facing Aldi, to the south.
Okay. Trustee Markwart?
Uh, just the question I have is, um, when the, nothing against the store, I'm just saying for traffic, I know with Aldi, that's a two lane going into a one lane. David, they do anything with, I know they end up running it, but people sorta just go. And now there'll be another store, and I don't know that, uh, that merge doesn't, uh, doesn't really work as well.
Are we talking about, uh, the western perimeter road that runs that?
Yes, when you're coming in, uh, off of Greg's Parkway, it's two lanes and what it does, it goes down to a one lane. You enter into, uh, Aldi's from there, and this will also be your entrance area.
Correct.
And the only thing, uh, not against the store is just in general, this roadway sorta comes together and, uh, going over to the Menards and stuff, it's, people just sorta go.
Yeah, the, in terms of Aldi's, it was, uh, designed to, to actually, where you see the northernmost Aldi's, uh, access point, they have parking for Aldi's, and then on the other side, there was consideration, we didn't know what business was going in there, but there is gonna be parking, uh, immediately north of that drive aisle. So it was always contemplated that there'd be a shared access at this point, and the other thing we need to think about is how will the development on the west side of Menards Drive, or whatever we wanna call it, uh, how does that happen? We're trying to set that up right straight across from where Aldi's and this business would go.
I know they have a, another entrance, which is great, uh, and so mine's, my concern is not with the store going in there, and my concern even with the store wasn't there with Aldi's, that the merge of traffic, it, uh, it's sudden. And a lot of people come in from on the left side, cut across, to go into the Aldi's.
So your, your point's well taken, uh, when we, should this project move forward into technical review, that's one of the things we'll be looking at.
So currently you're asking for three entrances to the parking lot, one at the northeast corner,
the southeast and southwest corners.
Correct, yeah, the original commercial subdivision master plan has, and with Aldi's, has a cross-access easement on that south... has a cross-access easement on that south, and that was programmed for two drives on that south. But, yeah, no, we, we wanted to have the north drive to help separate the car traffic a little bit, alleviate some potential congestion.
Understood. Other comments, questions from the board?
Is this by appointment, or is it walk to people's drive-in?
Yeah, people can drive in. It's, and, I mean, it has a fairly open showroom, so, yeah, they can park and, you know, they can drop their cars off, go walk to Menards and do some shopping, or go to Aldi and, and do what they need to do while they get their vehicle serviced.
The gas station.
Yeah.
But they price match.
We do price match.
Okay. That's fine. Common traffic persists tires, right? I mean, it's, want a busier retail stand, and then you have the problem with the traffic. It's probably a little less...
Yeah, this would be, and that'll come up in technical review, that density of, I mean, the frequency of traffic.
Yeah, we're not, we're not a major trip generator as it relates to traffic impact studies. We've done traffic impact studies when we get in front of DOT roads and...
Would it be safer to not have that southwest access there, so when cars are pulling in and potentially turning right to Aldi versus left, then, then...
It is better to...
Why, why do you think it's better?
They have that additional off of...
No, no, he's talking about the, maybe closing the southwest one?
Closing the southwest one, so that they're just driving further east, and then, and then, and just have the two. That way, they're not trying to immediately cut left, as people potentially are waiting that line to...
I don't disagree with your comment. I think operationally, if you wanted to explain how your trucks come in and out?
Yes. We do need that southwest drive for truck access for our deliveries, which are only twice a week. But, it is a full 67-foot tractor-trailer that comes and delivers. So, we would be coming off of Greg's Landing there, turning right, coming into the southwest entrance.
Turning right and immediately turning left with those big?
Yep. Yep. We have a truck turn that, that we've done, that we can maneuver and make that work. And then, we would pull forward in front of the bays, back into the service area, drop the tires off, pull back out.
What's the time of your deliveries?
They're very random, but they're only twice a week, and they're only there for about a half an hour. I think it's probably, it's not on peak hours that I'm aware of.
Can you control that?
I cannot control that.
What if you were to, just, just thinking, what if you were to slide that, what looks like a canoe there, slide the canoe west and make a larger entrance on the east? Enlarge that entrance on the east for your trucks?
We would still need to be able to get out, which I think would be the, the trouble without the southwest drive. Because once we pulled all the way around and did kind of a U-turn there, we would be stuck.
I got you.
Because I don't think we could pull in front of the store, and they don't want the trucks in front of the store anyways.
Right, yeah. I got you.
Yeah.
Do you exit the truck anymore?
No, the truck comes out the way it came. So, it comes in the southwest drive, pulls forward to the east, backs in to the rear, and then pulls out the southwest again.
Well, then you could do the same thing with the southeast drive if it was wider.
We could get entrance there, but then we'd be in front of the store again. We don't, they don't like the truck to go in front of the store.
No, no. It wouldn't be in front of the store. You'd pull in, you'd make a left, you'd make a left turn and back into your bay, just like you're talking about doing with the...
The bays are on the west side.
What's the bays on the south and the west?
The service, the entry for the deliveries is a, is a man, is a overhead door adjacent to the, here, actually. Since I'm here, I have all the things. Okay. That is the rear of the store.
Go back to that parking lot one.
Go back to which one?
The one that just right there. Is that what you want to look at?
Oh, so you're talking about, the truck comes in, maneuvers, backs in along the west side of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
It is very tight.
Now, I understand. Now, I understand.
Correct. So, then, on the bottom elevation here...
Got you. Okay.
And then it backs out, backs up to the south part of the building and pulls out? Is that what you're saying?
Pull straight.
No, we're able to just pull straight out.
Backs along the west, backs along the west side.
And then just pull straight out.
Now, I get it.
Wish I would have brought the truck turn.
Turns right parallel to the south and backs in along the west end, and then pulls straight out the southwest.
Yeah, now I'm clear.
I think what staff was trying to balance was some of the noise-related issues from the truck done, trying to mitigate some of that, and then the traffic kind of follows that original design.
And this will all come at technical review as well?
We would, if, if you approve of this, to move to technical review, we will look into all those issues.
Who owns the property to the west, and what's that zoned for?
Cuneo.
I don't know.
Up here?
Cuneo State.
You know, I have, I haven't looked it up in a while, but I think it's still the Cuneo Trust. But, I, I'm not 100% certain, but I think so.
Do we know what it's zoned for, or it's?
Same zone.
Oh, it's same.
Which is the Greg's Landing PUD, which is, you know, in this case, this automobile, this automobile service establishment needs a special use, but otherwise, retail, restaurant uses, those kind of uses are permitted.
And actually, this is the third lot in Greg's Landing that we've looked at. So, we actually looked at that lot to the west first, and we looked south, but that's where the daycare is going, and so staff actually recommended we take a look at this area as a good position in this commercial subdivision.
Yeah. And go shopping for food and then go shopping.
You mentioned beautifying the pond. What, what are you doing to beautify the pond?
So, right now, the pond is just a pond, and it's grass. So, we're adding landscaping around that, just to give it some...
Are you adding all those trees at your drawing shows?
Correct, yes.
Really?
That's a lot of trees.
I know we talked, Mike, about the fountain in the past.
Well, it wasn't a fountain.
I'm very aware. I've seen the historical imagery, and the pond to the south.
It was a waterfall.
Well, well, waterfall, but then we, I thought they'd, somebody had agreed to at least putting in a fountain. I don't remember who it was now, and whose responsibility.
We have had that discussion with them, and as part of this approval, we would expect that they would be adding some fountains. It's part of this project.
That's part of this project? So, they're the ones who will be?
They own, they own the pond, and they would be adding the aerators.
Oh, oh, that, so the pond will be owned by your?
It is. It's, it's a...
Which is why the trees all the way around.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it is a regional pond that serves the entire subdivision, but it is in the property that we are obtaining.
In the property, okay.
So, yes.
Yeah, and it was discussed as part of the Aldi's property, but we really couldn't do anything with it, because Aldi's didn't control the pond. So, now's the opportunity, and we will get the aerators.
You get a tire store with a pond.
Why are there no pictures of the fountain then?
Well, we want to get your input on what the fountain will look like, so naturally, we haven't, we don't want to influence your decision-making process.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you ever been to Vegas? I want one of those fountains that like...
Yeah.
Music.
I'll see what kind of, I'll see what they have in the budget.
A bunch of, a bunch of, like, rafts in there, like, tire.
Saladio Midwest.
Exactly.
But no, yeah, I mean, that's the intent of the beautification of the, of that pond area, so...
Other comments or questions? Otherwise...
I move to approve.
Second.
To direct, to begin technical review and appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, no, we don't need a motion, just a consensus.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yes or no would be sufficient.
Yeah, not a motion.
Each one of you. And would you like me to give him the, the speech, the pep talk?
Yeah. Well, do you want, do you want us to just kind of poll the board? Should this?
Sure.
Yeah. Go ahead with the project and review them.
As long as we're in the project.
Okay. Now, your speech.
Thank you. The current request is for a non-binding concept approval of the project. Feedback tonight from the Cow can be used by your team as a guide in the preparation of your formal development plans during technical review. It's important to remember that tonight's decision is not an approval or a denial, obviously, of the application. Moreover, the decision tonight shall not prevent the village board from changing its position on the project in the future, or adding further conditions in the future.
Okay.
It's nice to see a family business, long-term family, multi-generational, I'm assuming?
Yep, they're on the third generation.
Your third generation?
Not mine, sadly, no.
That's good.
They send people like me to these meetings.
None of the family members are tired of, it's a joke.
Oh, that was...
I had to spill that in there.
That was, yeah, Mike, that was... Off his mic.
Okay, all right.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget presentation. And I'm assuming we're starting with the golf fund, since we have people here for that?
Yes, we're just going to get the PowerPoint up here in a moment. And so, this will be presentation two of two for our fiscal '22, '23 budget. Just a quick recap, we presented the first half of the budget at our last committee, the whole meeting, two weeks ago. Our, our calendar going forward, public hearing is scheduled for April 5th, for consideration of the tentative budget. Still on pace for approval at our April 19th meeting. Last meeting, we covered the general fund and the dispatch fund. This evening, we'll be covering the following: the, the golf fund, the sub-funds of the general fund, the capital and metro parking, the replacement fund, the motorfield tax fund, and the village's three TIF funds. So, we'll go to the golf fund. With us is Vince Juarez, the Vice President of Operations for Kemper Sports, and Kevin Lind, our General Manager over at the Muni Golf Course.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here and having us here tonight. Vince Juarez, Vice President of Operations for Kemper Sports. I help support Kevin and his team at Vernon Hills. I live about 10 minutes up the road in Gurnee, so I pass by here quite frequently, so it's always a nice pit stop to come into, into Vernon Hills. We want to kind of talk a little bit about the industry as a whole, talk about some comparisons of Vernon Hills in the past couple of years, touch on some highlights for 2021, go through some course performance metrics, and what we have planned for 2022. Just to talk a little bit about the outlook, the national golf outlook for 2021, COVID hit almost just over two years ago, March 13th, 2020, and really changed the golf industry as a whole. The golf industry was on a steep decline back in 2020, 2019. The COVIDs was one of the bright spots as far as golf is concerned. People were looking for outdoor activities. People were looking for things to do, and golf has really taken off since March 13th of 2020. I provided with three different charts here that kind of talk about latent demand, women and juniors. I think these are important when it hits on Vernon Hills and the Muni, as far as who our clientele is, and what these significant, what these charts significantly show. What they show is latent demand is up significantly since 2019 to 17.8 million golfers from, from 2020, 17 point, 17 million. Additionally, on the beginner's side, it shows that we're up from 2019 of 2.5 million, 2020 of 3 million, to 2021 of 3.2 million beginners entering the game of golf. This is really a stat that bodes well for the future of Vernon Hills and what Kevin and his team have been working on at the golf course, so much so that Kevin has added junior golf tees, or is planning to add junior golf tees in here in 2022, to kind of capitalize on that junior golf boom. Women in golf since 2019 at 5.6 million, all the way up to 2021 at 6.2 million golfers on the women's sector. Again, Vernon Hills has a very heavy women population, league population, and bodes well for the future of golf in Vernon Hills. I will say that in Illinois, golf year over year, from 2020 to 2021, took a little bit of a dip backwards. It's, it's really, it's really people returning to work, okay? The workforce, people, companies were asking people to go back into the office. 2020 was a really strong calendar year, FY, which would have been FY '21, and FY '22, or 2021, we saw a little bit of a decline in golf. But, not that much of a decline. It's still extremely strong. As you could see, from 2018, we were at 14,316 rounds. The year of the COVIDs, FY '20, 10,845 rounds. FY '21, we did 20,985 rounds, and FY '22, we're projected to do 19,561 rounds. Utilization, we look at utilization to really drive greens fees, drive rate. The weekend utilization peaked out. It was, it was an, it was 51.2% in FY '22, is what we're projecting, the weekend utilization. Total utilization in FY '22 dropped slightly to 37%. And that's really indicative of weekday play, the fact that folks are returning to work, and weekday play has dipped slightly. The average greens fee and cart fee per player back in FY '20 was $15.72 per player, and in FY '22, rose to $17.38 per player. So, the average rate, the average dollar per player has gone up. This is really one of my favorite slides that I present to a lot of village boards, and it talks about net promoter score, how likely somebody is to represent your business to somebody else. You'll see back in FY '18, the net promoter score was 58.2. So, just to put a little bit into perspective, as far as what other companies are doing from a net promoter score, companies like Disney or Amazon, I always say, if you have a bad time at Disney, you really did it to yourself. There's always somebody there with a sticker, or, or somebody there to, to console the crying, the crying child. Disney and Amazon have MPS's in the 90s, in the mid to high 90s. You, you, a lot of people think about ordering something, they automatically go to Amazon. On the flip side of that, your lower MPS's are cable companies typically, utility companies. Those are usually in the teens. Our company standard, we try to get to a standard of 70.0. That's where we try to get to. Vernon Hills in the Muni has typically been pretty darn close to that 70.0 number. We did see an uptick in FY '19, FY '20, the year of, of COVID. FY '22, we're at 61.1. Service rating on a scale to 10 was 9.2. Course rating dipped a little bit to 8.3. Food and beverage, which Kevin will talk about a little bit, 7.6, but the recommendation rating was still strong at 8.8. Now, some of these ratings are based upon how many people fill out those surveys, because when you, the more surveys you get, the more surveys that are filled out, typically, it offsets some of those lower, those lower ratings. It usually takes five surveys to offset a negative survey. So, what we've been working with is trying to raise the number of surveys at Vernon Hills. They did a great job in FY '21, '22, and we want to get that bar even higher in '23.
Can I ask a question pertaining to this?
Sure.
So, you're trying to increase the number of surveys to increase, because you're trying to wash out the bad surveys, right?
Not necessarily. We're trying to get an accurate, an accurate count.
How often do you take a look at the bad surveys? Because you can always get all the great surveys, but how often do you take a look at the bad surveys and act on them?
I get an email from, if they fill out a survey, weekly, Monday morning, when I come in the office, I have a results of every survey that was filled out during that week. All the ratings, any comments, I see that on a weekly basis. There's a spot if somebody wanted a call back about something, I would go ahead and call them back. I did not have any of those this year going forward, which was where they definitely recommended a call. Few people, you can kind of look and see name, T-shirt, you can kind of piece together the T-shirt, look and see what group it was. If it's a regular, and it came out, you know, the next day, I'd have a conversation with them. Also, also with the surveys, we want to increase, because we're projected to do 19,000 round, a little over 19,000 rounds. Well, only, we only got 175 surveys out of those 19,000 rounds. So, trying to get more of a true accurate figure going forward. So, this year, we put QR codes on the golf carts with our cart placard with our rules, where all they do is scan their phone, so it would pop up. Also, people could T-type online. We have your email address. Once we check you in and you pay your greens fee, you're going to get a survey that next day, asking how your experience was. It's automatically generated through this program.
And detractors are, detractors are zero to sixes on the surveys. When you, when you get those surveys at Panera or Starbucks, detractors are zero to six, passives are seven and eights, and promoters are nines and tens. So, anybody that, if we get a survey that comes back, that comes back and gives us a negative rating, a negative 100 versus a zero versus 100, that survey... negative rating, a negative 100 versus a zero versus a hundred, that survey automatically triggers an instant email to Kevin. It doesn't even wait till Monday morning. It triggers an automatic email that second that somebody hits send on that survey. And then our policy is, is that our general managers follow up with a phone call to whoever, whomever that survey taker was to figure out what the situation was. So to Kevin's point, he did not have any negative surveys. We're trying to increase the promoters and turn some passives into promoters.
Well, when it comes to as many people as you're talking about, one of the things I know, I maybe fill out one or two surveys a summer.
Yeah.
But I get an email requesting me to fill out the survey probably six, eight times a month, um, you know.
Play a lot of golf.
Yeah, I play a lot of golf there and, and, and anytime you've booked the tee time on, on, uh, you know, the, the Chrono Golf, which is by the way, an outstanding system, um, and real easy to work with, then I always get an email, and I just figure, you know, my opinions aren't gonna change. Do you want people like me?
They matter.
Filling in as many times as possible?
The, the, the surveys matter to us. Um, it's a, it's, it's, it's called true review. It's one of our, our core principles as a company to monitor the survey results that we have along with our true service program, our service standards. So we monitor those surveys. I get an email from all the properties that show what all of those property survey results are on a weekly basis. And I can tell you that the survey results at all of our properties are read from, from everybody at the home office, the executives, all the way up the chain of command, read all of those survey results, because they want to know what customers are saying about our golf courses. So to answer your question, if you get a survey, we'd love for you to fill out your survey. Yes.
Because the other, because the other thing that credits a business is repeat customers. I mean, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot, and we do get a lot of that where we get annual pass holders at different facilities, uh, or outing guests at different facilities that, that, uh, you know, I just got another survey, I'm not gonna fill it out today.
I got a question. So that food rating, is that really necessary? I mean, no one goes to a golf course for food.
Uh, it depends what type of golf course it is, and this is a standard survey that we use across all of our properties. Like if you were to go to Band and Dunes or Stream Song or, you know, maybe.
Still don't go there for food. I'm going, you know, you go there for the golf course. Now, is that, does that MPS include the food rating or is that?
It does.
See, that's, I don't know. That's just my perspective. Food is sort of negligible.
Yeah.
The 19th Hall is really not known for food.
We have a lot of properties that have very heavy food.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Believe me, I've been in that, I've golfed at some nice.
It is one of the things that a number of the regulars have asked us to, um, as Kevin had attested to improve as moving forward this year.
Which we're gonna touch on.
I mean, if you want to improve your food, that costs more money.
Well, but it, it's still, the people pay for it, it's not like it's, you know.
Pass through.
Yeah.
You're not selling food to make a loss, you're selling food to make a profit.
Yeah.
So I wanted to talk just briefly about the FY '23 budget in comparison to FY '22 projections. So we're projected on a revenue basis to do 410,231 dollars in FY '22, which was a year over year cha, which was a change, uh, uh, to FY '22 budget of approximately 12%. We're budgeting in FY '23 to do 453,000 and change in revenue. On the, on the payroll side, we're currently projected to do 263,993 in payroll with a projection of FY '23 at just, just shy of 300,000 at 299,000. I will say that we've had, uh, obviously significant, uh, labor shortages across the industry. We're seeing at many facilities having to pay more per hourly labor than we ever have in the past, and that's also indicative of, uh, minimum wage increases throughout Illinois as well. Operating expenses, 2000, or FY '22 projected at 166,000, FY '23 at a small increase to 172,000. On the EBITA side, earnings before interest tax, depreciation, amortization, which in your case would be net income, uh, FY '22 budget was a negative 69,000 on the budget side. We project to come in this year FY '22 favorable to budget at a negative 52,000 and setting the FY '23 budget at a negative 55,000. Still significant, uh, change, significant improvement from pre-COVID days back in FY '20 where it was a negative, uh, 194. Some challenges that we've had, uh, not uncommon, I think everybody is aware of challenges throughout the, throughout the U.S. Uh, supply chain issues. Uh, we have equipment issues across the entire industry. I received a phone call today that some equipment that we ordered back in, for, for delivery back in, in the summer of '21 is just being delivered now at one of our facilities. Uh, carts that we ordered back in August of last year, we'll be lucky to see in September of this year. Uh, so supply chain issues are still hampering the golf industry. What that's doing is driving prices up. It's driving the price of Gatorade up, it's driving the price of golf up, it's driving the price of fertilizer, which has gone up almost 50%. It's driving those costs through the roof. Obviously, that ties into inflation. Uh, staffing shortages, which we touched base on, uh, earlier, uh, trying to find certain, certain job classifications has become hard. Kevin's done a great job at the Muni, just staffing the golf shop, staffing the bar area. And then I put, we put return to work down here. Uh, that just kind of ties into staffing shortages, but also.
The weekday utilization where you're gonna start, people can't sneak out of their house because they're.
Right.
Three Zoom calls and they got 45 minutes, they can go run, play nine holes or play a few holes, come back. They're actually starting to go back to the offices and that's tightening up some of, some people's golf that they used to play during the week.
Correct.
During COVID.
Uh, some things that have, that have led the way for us, that have been, uh, helping us along the way here, uh, obviously our staff, which ties directly into our net promoter score, uh, and the experience that people have at the Muni. Uh, Kevin has assembled a great team, both in the pro shop and on the food and beverage side, a wonderful grounds team as well. Uh, pricing opportunities, we have opportunities with the heavy utilization, with the strong rounds, we have opportunity to raise, to, to, to leverage our prices and to, uh, really drive revenue. Uh, community's facility, the Muni is a community facility, it's a community asset. Kevin continues to drive the community to the facility. They come up there for, for bingo nights, they come up there for prom pictures, uh, you name it, there's folks up there at the Muni doing a, a variety of different things. Uh, marketing, I think, uh, uh, Tom had mentioned the Chrono Golf platform that we have, uh, the marketing platform that we have, we've, we've, we've invested into some drone footage for FY '23 to really have a, a, a stronger impact on social media and to really continue to drive folks into the Muni. Utilization, I touched base on that already, utilization being so strong on the weekends and continue to be strong overall, uh, we have some opportunities there on the revenue side. So Kevin's gonna talk a little bit about what we still have to come in '23 and what he's got planned.
Okay, so advanced e-marketing platform, um, this year, you know, we're really gonna be focused on at least trying to send out at least one, if not two emails a month to our database promoting special events, book a tee time, using Facebook to get the message out that way. Um, also, Facebook will be using, this year, we actually funded some money to be able to boost our Facebook posts, reach more people. That tends to be where we're, we're seeing more people finding us and we're getting the most traction from our posts and stuff like that. Um, additional golf development programs, third parties, um, we partnered with a company called Spark Golf. They run leagues across the country. Um, there's about 15 courses in the Chicago line area that are signed up. They're gonna be a new league for us on Thursday nights. Basically, people are gonna sign up on their app, they're gonna run their league, they're gonna call, they're gonna pay me basically the green fees for the group, everything is app-based through them. What it's gonna hopefully do is bring some people to Vernon Hills that might not have thought about playing there, trying to attract some new golfers that may or may not have never been there in past years and try to turn them into a loyal customer. Um, continued best class and service with our true service program. Uh, we put our employees through four modules of true service, that's the kind of the patent of Kemper Sports with their training model and providing good customer service to our patients. Um, focuses on food and beverage, menu upgrades. Um, with this budget, I also have put in for, a big issue we kind of find is a lot of our golfers are running to the pro shop, running to the first tee. We don't, they're not getting here, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes in front. If they came here and they had five minutes and they wanted a hot dog, we can't get them a hot dog quick enough by cooking on the grill to get them out to the tee box on time for their tee time. So we're looking to invest in like a hot dog steamer slash roller where we can put hot dogs on there, let them go through there, put rots on there. That way, when somebody comes in, hey, can I get a hot dog? Here's your hot dog, here's a bun, there's your condiments, and they can go. That should help us increase our food and beverage numbers, being able to attract or basically service them in our restaurant area before they go out and tee off. And then hopefully, when they're over there, they buy a beer or two and increases our food and beverage.
And I would just say some additional prepackaged items, uh, that are easy, that are grab and go items on the food side, that people, golfers can come in, grab, uh, pay for and go.
Um, also return to events and parties. Um, I have about seven parties so far that I've booked within the last week and a half since kind of COVID's kind of shut down, everything's opened up for the summer, and the phone is ringing for different people wanting graduation parties, showers, so we'll consider to field those and book as many of them as possible to help our food and beverage numbers. Pro shop merchandise, um, last year, obviously with supply chain issues, we've had some issues where there was a time, beginning of the year, we didn't get some golf balls you're supposed to get in May till almost July. Well, I bumped those up where I got them a month ago, or basically three weeks ago, instead of have, everybody wanted to wait for May 1 delivery for the new budget. I said, send them to me and they were hoping that I get them in May. We got them beginning of March, which has been good because since we've opened up golf course, we have golfers out there, merchandise sales have helped actually having that stuff in the pro shop going forward. Um, we're gonna be, new product line with Calway, I'm turning into a partnership with them, we're, we're gonna give them some pro shop space. They give us a pretty good bottom line discount off of golf balls, gloves, and try that out and see how that works as opposed to just carrying strictly tailor-made. And then in the man products, different trends or stuff that we see, if we can get the product and it looks like something people are asking for, we'll do our best to do that as well.
Yeah, one of the requests I have was, uh, women's apparel. You know, Muni stuff that's, you know.
So I got a couple of comments. So golf balls, no, not even close to baseballs, you can't even get baseballs right now, by the way. Baseballs are up to $175 a box. Anyway, that's beside the point. As far as the parties, do you provide the food or they, they bring their own food?
Um, either way, if they want something from, you know, they want to do a party where they want hamburgers, hot dogs, brats, sure. Um, if they want to cater in their own food from, let's say, a local company or Hits Pizza or something like that, then I'll charge them a room rental fee to pay for the bartender so that at least we're getting something from the space, and then they're also buying all their beverages through us at the golf.
You ever consider like going to like around to some restaurants and maybe do a collaboration where you, where you set up the parties and they have a choice, you could go here, here and here, and then maybe get a percentage of?
We do have a list of recommended, uh, caterers.
We have a couple of preferred vendors that we get.
They get a markup?
Percentages from, yes.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And just to touch base on your baseball comment, you're, it's the same thing with golf balls right now?
No, I know, but baseball's like crazy. I have a friend who's in, yeah.
It, uh, it's unbelievable.
Well, the last time I had Kevin order a club for me, it was, what was it, months they were waiting for shafts, so it was, yeah.
Yeah, we could get the club, the shaft was six weeks back order.
So I got another que, I got another comment, so I've never, have you ever considered having a cart person go around selling drinks on the golf course, or is that not allowed here?
It, you know, and the nine-hole golf course, I know, and I know Kevin has done it periodically in the past, because I've seen some folks out there, but very periodically. Um, it's certainly an option, but, you know, typically we're doing that at 18-hole facilities where you're, you know, 13 holes out on the golf course, you're not back by the clubhouse. Uh, we offer coolers and have some different variety, different, different avenues for people to grab drinks and, and to take them out there with them. Uh, it's certainly something we can look at.
You could put hot dogs on that, right? You have a steamer and buns?
We had a, we actually had our own beverage cart until just a few years ago.
Okay, yeah, I've never seen it.
Yeah, the beverage carts don't have steamers though.
Oh, you can't get one with a steamer on it? Can't customize one?
You can, you, you can customize anything these days.
Trusty Forrester?
Yeah. Have you, a few marketing things. Have you tried to, with the simulator, um, promote leagues during the winter months? If you want, I'll throw all my questions to you, that was one. It, have, has, I know it's brand new this year, so it's hard to do that. Um, it, we're still on the learning curve, but just a thought, I know that other communities, um, have had success with that. And then secondly, um, had you, have we ever gone to some of the local businesses, like the big CDWs or something, and tried to promote maybe Friday afternoon golf leagues for their businesses or even, um, onsite events to some of the local businesses? You know, work events during, obviously you are doing well in the summer, but on maybe some of the downtimes, you know, leave during the middle of the day and have a work event? Just because we have a lot of businesses here that are large and, um, could benefit from that.
Yeah, the shoulder season events essentially. Uh, to answer your question, I'll let Kevin handle the.
And it's actually kind of that you brought up, because I actually had a phone call from a couple of salespeople from CDW today wondering if we could set up some outing days for them to take out, their sales reps to take out some customers.
Yeah, so, you know, we've got some big businesses.
Looking, you know, pre-COVID, looking through some of the old, that, that was a big drive from CDW at the facility, where we were kind of one of those places where they would bring customers, they buy our punch cards and stuff like that and work out that way. Um, as far as with leagues and for the simulator, um, definitely something, kind of want to get our feet wet this year, see what it looked like. Um, definitely something that we'll look to do next year. Um, you know, it's the funny, it's people think of a simulated golf league as a golf league with, you know, 16, 20 people. It'd be a similar golf league that people would just come and play it on their own time because you can't put 20 people on a simulator at the same time and only have it one. Um, you know, some of the facilities I know like X-Golf has, has those, but they have 70 simulators, so that will, that will, you know, work out for a league of 24 players where they're all still there together and playing at the same time.
Yeah, I think there's some room to grow there maybe on some of that. Have you had any feedback on the pricing of the simulator?
I've had a couple of people say, say, eh, it was kind of expensive, but then I've had other people saying, well, I paid $80 down the street to do the same thing. Obviously, a little bit upgraded simulator pricing there, but I've had some repeat customers, I've had a gentleman that comes in and not even so much to play a course, he just likes to use it basically as a driving range. With our flight scope launch monitor, you can see spin rate for golf balls. So he's trying different golf balls, he's trying different clubs with different shafts, almost fitting type thing and working his way to that one, so.
That may not be a good and bad idea if you can get a club manufacturer to club fit.
We, yeah, we, we've.
Hang in there, you know.
We talked about, we talked about it this last winter.
Well, and, um, there are some of the golf stores that you buy, like you said, the punch pass kind of idea, um, and you, you know, you get a discount for buying that. I don't know, maybe that's food for thought for the next winter season, someone like you're talking about, try to get some repeat usage out of, uh, some kind of discounted punch pass or, or. Because I know some of, like, some of the stores who have to make reservations and do it, and, um, I think they're all pretty successful at that. Again, it's just the first year, so we're learning, learning how to use.
Exactly, then I gotta feel it out and see what the demand was gonna be, and then we can adjust going forward and.
And to your point, the price point is pretty mid-range, I think, from some of the, some competition.
Yes, I mean, when we went and set the pricing, I looked at all the different courses kind of in the area, and we fall right in the middle of where everybody else is at.
Yeah, I was just curious on feedback, how, you know, if you had received any, again, it's new this year, so I was just wondering.
Trusty Shane?
I have a couple of questions. Well, really, on the simulator, what was the revenue this year on the, on the simulator? Did I miss that?
With food and beverage, we were right about golf, for simulator revenue.
Oh, for the simulator.
And the food and beverage component with it?
Not combined.
5,000.
So simulator 5,000? What do we pay for it, 25?
Yep.
What's the lifespan on that equipment?
Uh, it's, I've had them last seven years, I've had them last 12.
Okay.
I mean, it's a, it's a computer, so you're updating your, your software.
Okay. You know, we did, the Village did a marketing push on that. Do we get, did you guys get a little bit more from that marketing push, would you think, or was it kind of still flat?
I think that was back in, end of January, if I remember correctly.
We did a push, and also, I think, you know, if you remember going back to December, when we had the simulator up and going, people were golfing up until Christmas Day.
Yeah.
If people can golf outside the simulator or secondary, so we didn't really start getting the big push for people coming in until that January.
And we also ran the, we're still under the mask mandate, and with the simulator being indoors, I'm sure that had an effect on, you know, the use of it.
But it'll grow, it'll grow. So question about food and beverage. So, I'm looking at the, you're at, are you at a net loss for food and beverage? I'm looking at the financial summary.
Yeah, we did. So, food and beverage projected to do 53,000 in total revenue with 20,000 in total payroll. And, no, it's still a net profit on food and beverage.
So, okay, so I'm looking at projected 53,000, operating expenses 55,000 for food and beverage on the financial summary. Now, that's a projected, but you're now.
Operating expenses projected are supposed, are at 6,000, 6,000 on food and beverage.
Okay, so this financial summary that I'm looking at is potentially has.
Maybe it has another, something baked into there. We'd have to check.
Well, I think that would have to be cleared up because what is your, what is your?
Oh, costs, we're talking about cost of goods, yeah.
Well, what is your cost of goods percentage to the, to your revenues on food and beverage?
Cost of goods, so, cost of goods are at 38, or 47% on food and beverage. So, we did 25,000 in costs on 55,000 in sales.
Okay, that's right, okay, so I'm seeing those numbers here. So, what is your target? 47% is pretty high in food and beverage.
Yeah, we'd like to be closer to 37, 35%.
What do you think is accounting for that?
Lack of sales, not items that need to be priced higher, supply, you know, increasing prices that we're buying in from the street, supply chain issues, increased soda prices, Gatorade prices. We need to raise our prices along with it.
Do you have a control issue on the, on the inventory?
No.
How often do you do inventory?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Yep.
And you track the liquor sales?
Correct.
Now, you have revenue revised budget, 21, 22 in sales, 107,000 here, and your year-to-date 49,000.
On food and beverage.
Yeah.
Yep.
On sales, right? So, we're coming close to that. We're not going to hit that, obviously.
We're not going to.
We're not having come close to that, right? But now, granted, you probably propose that more open because of COVID is obviously definitely drilling those numbers down.
Yeah, we thought, when we, when we stood up here last year, we thought COVID was going to ease their restrictions on food and beverage, and actually, the restrictions kind of remained the same, which really shut down food and beverage operations.
Yeah, I mean, the revenue on the, I don't know what past revenue has been on food and beverage and percentages in the, at the, at the golf course. But 47% should not be a number to, I mean, that's a pretty high number.
I agree.
And you're already operating at a loss, so you can make up for some of that in food and beverage.
Yep.
So, why wouldn't you increase prices along with your costs? Let's say your costs go up 10%, you don't increase your prices automatically 10%?
We have, we have increased our costs, costs, or our sell price, our sell price along the way. Yeah, we need to continue to do so.
Correlate with the increase in your cost, in your food costs?
I'm sorry?
Do they correlate with your increase in cost of goods for food and beverage?
Uh, not all the time. You know, we have to, we have to, we have to kind of balance between what is too, too expensive to sell something and what is not, and what is more of an acceptable price.
Well, at some point, whatever you're selling, nobody, you know, you're not going to sell an item that's normally targeted at three bucks and have to raise it to five, you're just not going to sell that item. So, you might need a better item, maybe a different type of profit margin, but.
Different burger, different hot dog.
That's right. And, and what about the pro shop? My last question. I'm also showing revenues and pro shop. What was the revenue and expenses on the pro shop?
Pro shop revenue was 17,000 with cost of goods sold at 8, 8,500, 50%.
50%? Is that a?
That's in line.
That's in line?
Yeah.
In line with what?
Industry standard.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I also want to make note of the fact that there are a number of things for the golf course which are under the capital fund. I have to mention the carpeting because I have several people who might watch this, and I've been told about the carpeting a number of times. But that and several other things like the card burn exterior doors and the painting and the, a couple of those things, some tree work and that is all in our capital fund, so it's not part of this budget. But it's, it's there and it's going to be done, so.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so then what we're looking for is a motion to approve the golf course fund of 509,478. Is that correct?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other comments or questions?
I have a quick comment. So, we made an infusion of 650,000 from the general fund in 2021. How often are we making those infusions from the general fund?
That was a, that, wasn't that a bookkeeping change or something? Yeah.
This was two fiscal years ago, 2021. You know, I could look into that further and see the sequence of, of that transfer.
Like, how often are those infusions being made into the golf course?
Right, we can take a look at the history on that.
That was a, that, my understanding was that was a one-time thing to make up for some accounting. And if you go back and check on it, I think that's.
Because we're on, we'll be on the same path here if we don't get a course correction.
Actually, that was supposed to be basically almost a one-time thing.
I know, but we're running at a, at a loss, though, is my point. So, eventually, the fund is going to deplete unless we.
But that 650 was, had something to do with accounting.
Okay.
That's why it was so high. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster? Aye. Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim? Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schen?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Kevin?
All right, we'll continue on to finish up the general fund. We have two sub-funds that we'll cover this evening. The first will be the capital, and for that, I'll turn it over to Director Brown.
Thank you very much. You have a couple of documents in front of you. This, this discussion will revolve around Tab L. And before we get into the details of Tab L, I just wanted to point out, there is a document, the CIP spreadsheet. We did share that with the board back in February, but it's been updated. So, the CIP spreadsheet includes a number of funds that are within this spreadsheet. Capital Subfund, MFT, Metra, and Dispatch. Some of those we'll be talking about immediately after the Capital Subfund. What I've done to augment our February committee of the whole discussion was highlight the ones in yellow and orange that have been modified since the earlier presentation. Specifically, Lakeview Fairway Route 60 land acquisition. We're doing well in terms of land acquisition. There's six parcels, there's two of them remaining that we're trying to finalize ahead of the June 30th deadline. So, that's, that's $458,000. On page two, the stormwater open space improvements. There's a new item, watershed grant match. It's $250,000. You may recall that we had a study prepared by Burke Engineering for Lake Charles, and this would be our grant match. We had a meeting with the Stormwater Management Commission, and we're anticipating that there would be between 4.5 and 5 million dollars to affect some change from Lake Charles going up to Butterfield Road. They have also talked with Mundeline and other people upstream about some other projects that would be also funded, not including the four and a half million. It's a separate pot of money. I think the total monies is 30 million at this time for that watershed area. So, that was the second item. And then in terms of brick paper repairs, I wanted to point out that, that $10,000 was on the CIP, and that was shifted to the Public Works Operation Budget. The last item is, we added the sand server replacement for PD, and that's 65,000. With some of the things that the police department have added to make our town safer was the camera readers throughout town. And there's going to be more need for things like that and file server space. So, it's a capacity issue. Those are the four items that have been modified since the February presentation. And I can get into the actual Capital Subfund now. Capital Subfund is substantially consistent with past years. Streetscape improvements, 85,000. Preventive maintenance, 250,000. Bike path improvements, 165. Traffic signals. What we're looking to do at Lakeview by the high school is have a warrant analysis at that, right by the Arbor Theater intersection. So, we'd like to see whether or not a traffic signal is warranted. Some improvements to the streetlights, 120,000. Open space and stormwater improvements, 740,000. Village facility repair and replacement, 1,133,500. And then IT equipment, 190,000. That's a general overview of what was presented back in February. I can go through specifics of any item that you may have questions on. But, but that's generally the overview for this account. I do understand that the board has seen this before, so it might be repetitive. If you end up having no, no questions, the value for the account is 2,713,500.
Slightly different from the original number we got, which was 2.4, so.
Right, and so, that's why I wanted to point out a couple of those changes.
Yep, got it.
Changes, thank you.
The land acquisition, educate me, what's the purpose of that land acquisition at Lakeview Fairway?
Yes, sir. So, for the capacity widening, basically from the post office all the way over along Lakeview Past Phillip and then all the way to Hawthorne, we have a federally funded project that we're anticipating, not this summer, but the following summer, would be under construction. It includes traffic signal modifications at Hawthorne. It includes widening from that intersection going south to the police station and then resurfacing from Phillip Road going to Fairway. So, the land acquisition is necessary because we're widening it. So, whether it's Bears Fit, whether it's Portillo's, whether it's the Northwest Corner Wendy's, or the larger mall that we talked about previously.
So, Vernon Hills, we own the land then, and when they do the construction, they have an easement with us then? When they, I'm assuming they're going to build and widen on the acquired land? Is that how that works?
Yes, so sometimes we need to acquire actual land, so we're purchasing that. And then a large part of it is acquiring easements for construction. And part of the federal aid process, we're required to accomplish that before bid letting.
And then the construction cost, then, the federal grant then pays for that? Or are we paying a percentage?
So, the, the federal match is 80, 80%? It's 80, 20?
That's what you have in the far-right comments, okay.
Yes, sir.
I understand, thank you.
And we're the 20.
We're the 20, I hope.
We're the good side.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions about the capital fund? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the capital fund, the amount of 2,713,500.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Schen?
Aye. Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll conclude in the general fund now by talking about the Metro Parking Subfund. We'll cover just some quick facts about the metro operation. Many of you might be familiar with this facility. That's about 655 parking spaces. The daily parking fee is currently $1.75. The Village also offers a prepaid parking permit for $55 for every two months. Currently, Metro has had some changes to their schedules as a result of the pandemic. As it stands right now, there are currently four inbound and outbound trains heading to the city on the North Central Service Line, and there is currently no weekend service to the station. Earlier this year, we had an analysis completed by our Support Services Manager in the Police Department, Laura Erickson. And so, we were able to kind of do a snapshot of some historical trends with the Metro Parking Fund in terms of parking numbers and revenues for the facility. What you can see here are really the two main revenue sources, our, our daily parking fees and then the parking permits. As you can see, there's, there's a significant impact from the pandemic. The average from 2017 to, through 2020 was about 31,000 spots purchased in a given year, averaging about 121 spots a day. When we hit the pandemic in 2021, the heart of the pandemic, when trains were, I think, running either at one train a day at, at the max, you could see we're about 632 spots purchased for the year, averaging just about two parkers per day. With this analysis, we looked at the first six months of, of 2022, and we were seeing an uptick in the trend, but certainly not a return to where we were. I think if you drive out there right now, you'll see we are above what's currently on the screen right now, probably averaging somewhere between 25 to 30 parkers per day. The Metro Parking passes are following, or excuse me, the, the parking permits are following the same pattern. Very low numbers currently. This is obviously a result of offices not opening yet and people not having the need to go back into the city for work. So, with that, just a financial overview of, of the Metro Parking Subfund and what we're projecting for fiscal '23. Similar to the theme from two weeks ago, we are, are just assuming a, a status quo for the upcoming year, not really having any, any true indication of how the, the results of returning to the office and the pandemic are going to have on our Metro ridership. In the coming year, we're going to continue to monitor this activity, see how these numbers are, are trending upwards or downwards, and then also be taking a deeper dive into our, our current parking fee. As I mentioned earlier, it's $1.75 to try and cut into some of that loss. We might be coming back before the board this time next year with potential opportunities to maybe increase some of these fees and have some more skin in the game from some of the users of the station. So, we're looking at an overall subfund expenditures of $86,560 for fiscal '23.
Did you guys, is, is the auxiliary lot, is that closed off now? Or the exit is closed off?
It is. The whole lot is closed off, really replicating what the, there's not a lot of ridership. So, we did not pay the last two years to have it plowed, and so we blocked.
Saving some, okay, that's a figure.
I'm also working with Kevin. One of the things that he would like to know is, when was the original Metro lot constructed? And then when was the, the other one resurfaced? So, we have a life cycle analysis, and that's one of the things we want to work through.
Any other comments or questions on this fund? The figure we're looking at is 86,560, is that correct?
Correct. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call?
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Schen?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it back over to Director Brown for a review of our replacement fund.
Thank you. We're, we'll be in Tab V. So, accomplishments, replaced three patrol vehicles and one police administrative vehicles. Extended the life of various vehicles. We were able to procure five new trucks after not purchasing vehicles the prior year. Many excavators really helping us in terms of our staff's ability to do more work in-house. In fact, there's one or two projects that are on the CIP list that we're challenging. My, my staff is looking to be challenged to construct those in-house. We may have to pay for materials, but we have the labor, and that's a savings there. So, the V-HAC bridge is one, one item, and then also the boardwalk out at Hartley. So the V-HAC bridge is one, one item, and then also the boardwalk out at Hartley. In terms of the proposed budget replacement fund, Public Works, there's a proposal included in the budget is a five-yard dump truck with plow and spreader, $200,000. F-550 three-yard dump truck, plow and spreader, $125,000. The police department has some, some needs. They're looking to have three Ford Explorer patrol vehicles and one Ford Edge administrative vehicle, $152,000. And then a setup of new vehicles is another $46,000. We also have Mike Allison's old vehicle that needs replacement, that's being used by one of our inspectors in the building department, and so the proposal is to have a Ford Escape Hybrid, $30,000. Those are the, the items included in the replacement fund. The requested dollar amount is $553,000.
I got a question. Chief Kreese, is there like a big lead time on these, I'm assuming these Ford vehicles, right? If you ordered it today, you'd get it, what, six, seven, eight, nine?
Yeah, in fact, we, we're asking, I think, next board meeting, the agenda item will be to preorder, even though the budget hasn't been approved, because we anticipate 10-month lead time for these vehicles.
Right, not only getting the cars, but then you've got to make them, outfit them to.
Yeah, outfitting's going a lot faster than it used to, but, but the ordering and receiving is just really, we waited eight, eight or so months last year, and it's not going to get any better, so.
Microchips continue.
Well, in fact, it was just announced today that Ford Motor is going to begin shipping vehicles without all of the chips, and so that they have stock on hand, and then retrofitting the chips.
Plus, they're not allowed to go over invoice as well, so.
That they're going to be sending to dealerships to be sold, and when we get the chips, you can bring it in, and we'll put the chip in when it, you know, after you already own the car. Yeah? No? Any other comments or questions on this fund? So we're looking for? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. We are now moving to Tab M, Motor Fuel Tax Fund. Light, light items for this is the land acquisition for the Lakeview project we talked about, $458,000. That project on Lakeview also requires utility relocation. That is 100% local cost. We're estimating that's $250,000. And the road program, so the road program that we do with Mundaline and Libertyville, we did open up bids, and we'll be presenting that to the village board. We've budgeted $1.2 million, and the numbers came in at $1,055,000 and change. So some positive results from our bids. That is the account for Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and the dollar amount is $2,464,000 is requested.
Comments or questions on this fund? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve $2,464,000? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, a second, roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, almost home here. Last section would be our, our three TIF funds, the Vernon Hills Town Center, Melody Farms, and the newest TIF, the Hawthorne Mall TIF District. Two weeks ago, we reviewed our, our general purpose fund, which had an outline of the village's outstanding debt. I just wanted to take a quick moment this evening to review the debt that's, the debt that is associated with our three TIF districts. As you can see here, our Vernon Hills Town Center has three bond issuances that total about, little over $7 million total, with the Melody Farms district, TIF district having a current debt issuance of about $18.2 million. So the thing to note here is that all of these debts are self-sufficient or self-sustaining through each TIF district. So that's a substantial portion of the village's overall debt that's on the books. We'll start with the Vernon Hills Town Center TIF. This TIF was designated back in 2002. It's expected to come to an end very soon here in 2025. When the, when the TIF was initially formed, there was a frozen EAV of just over $2 million. Presently, that EAV is about $25 million, so a large growth there. And as I previously mentioned, the current outstanding debt on May 1 of '22 will be about $7.3 million. In the upcoming proposed '23 budget, pretty status quo from previous years, we're anticipating an increment of just over $2 million with a general fund contribution per, per state law of $204,000, for total revenues of about $2.25 million. Our normal debt service payments are going to be made in 2023. The only new expense this year is related to the recent acquisition of Lot 4 in this TIF. As you remember, at the end of 2021, the village took donation of the Lot 4 parcel in this TIF district with the intention of creating a community park or passive space for that, for that development. So the $51,075 is earmarked for some consultant work to begin the planning phases for that project. So what we would be looking for here is a motion and approval of expenditures of the
Are there any comments or questions?
The, the TIF expires 2025?
Correct.
2025?
Correct, yeah, 23 years.
And what's left on the, what's, it was the slide before, I believe?
Sure, yeah, it would.
Seven million?
Yes, just 7.3 million.
So we're projected to hit that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the Vernon Hills Town Center TIF in the amount of $1,628,795?
Motion to approve Vernon Hills Town Center TIF.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, moving along to the Melody Farms TIF District. You're all familiar with this development. This is really kind of the model TIF district, formed back in 2017. The initial EAV for the property was $290,000. It's currently hovering just over $43 million, so very large increase in value to this property from that project. Current outstanding debt come May 1 of '22 is about $18.2 million. Overall, this, this TIF is performing very, very well. We're projecting to start the, the fiscal year with a balance of about $3.6 million. When you take into account the anticipated increment plus the general fund contribution, we're looking at a little, little over $4.2 million of revenue, with only having debt service obligations of about $1.5 million. And then contractual services, that represents the required school contribution for any students that are generated from the TIF. We do have about 10 to, I think, 10 to 12 students that live in the apartments in the, in the, this TIF district, so there's a contribution that we make from the TIF District to District 73. So overall, revenues over expenses of about $2.4 million, projecting to end the year at just over $6 million. So again, this TIF is performing very, very well. Finance Director Florrie has been working with our bond consultant, Spear Financial, at potential options for refunding the existing bonds to potentially shorten the debt service time period on this TIF. So we'll be coming back to the board probably sometime later this summer with some options for consideration to potentially shorten that, shorten that time period. And with that, we're looking for approval of expenditures for fiscal '23 of $1,769,435.
Comments or questions from the board?
So you're saying, to rehash, that this TIF has a life cycle till 2040, and 23 years?
Correct.
But we're looking to potentially end it early?
Correct, so this, this development is essentially built out, it's completed. I believe if Director Brown can confirm, but I, all the intersection improvements associated with the development have now been recently completed as of the spring, and so there's really no outstanding improvements left. And so we're really just paying off the debt service from the initial bond issuance. So based on, on how the revenues are coming in, there might be an opportunity to, to pay off that debt a little bit early.
And by paying that debt off early, then that will initiate the tax levying parties to get the actual EAV?
Correct, that would be, that would be.
Back to the schools, the park districts, which would be a, it's a, I mean, it's a great property. It's, it's paying off really well, so.
So we'll have more information on kind of that complete package later this year.
Okay, anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Melody Farm TIF in the amount of $1,769,435? Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and finally, our newest TIF district, you're familiar with the Hawthorne Mall, which was formed back in, in 2020. This TIF district includes, in essence, the entire mall campus with the exception of the JCPenney and Macy's properties. Not, not much increment growth since 2020. As you're, as you recall, there's no debt on this TIF. This is a pay-as-you-go development, so as the increment comes in from the development through our redevelopment agreement that was approved in summer of 2021, the developer will be reimbursed for eligible expenses. We're not projecting much of an increment this year, just about $37,000. Then the required 10% general fund contribution, putting at total revenues of about $40,810. And then just some remaining contractual services, mostly legal fees concluding on some of the redevelopment agreement associated with this TIF. And so we're really, based on the current construction schedule, not anticipating much of the bigger increment until really 2024, so we've got some, some time to go before this TIF really starts to take off.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, at a total of $35,000, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim? Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries.
And that brings us to the end. Again, just a reminder, we'll have our public hearing at our next board meeting on April 5th, and then planning for approval of the final budget for fiscal '23 on April 19th. That is it for the budget presentation this evening, and then just a quick note for, for this evening's closed session, we would just need a closed session. Motion for collective bargaining and approval of minutes.
So a motion to adjourn committee of the whole and go into executive session four, repeat that, please?
That would be collective bargaining and approval of minutes.
Okay. Is there a motion to that extent?
Second.
Since it's, it needs a roll call, yeah, okay.
Because it's.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries, and we will not be conducting any business after the closed session.
Correct.